Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Sciou Township Planning Commission meeting for April 24th, 2023. And if we could all stand and say a prayer.
Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Secretary Carrie Chang, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore.
President, here.
Commissioner Sherman.
Present.
Commissioner Chang, present. Commissioner Hume.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Colbertson.
Present.
Senator Moore.
All right, and Commissioner Reiser will be joining us probably within 15 minutes. Announce him being present when he arrives. All right, moving to adoption of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to modify or add to the agenda?
I move to accept the agenda as is.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hume and supported by Commissioner Moore to accept the agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Then communications and correspondence. Anyone receive any emails? There were no communications transmitted to the Planning Commission. Okay. Then there's no presentation this evening, so with that, we'll move on to public comment. And people wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda, that would be with regard to the Nicholson conditional use for a self-storage facility, are welcome to comment at this time. And such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes to address the commission. So with that, I will open public comment at 7:02. And we'll start with folks that are present in the room and then move on to our public on Zoom. Is there anyone here that would like to address the Planning Commission on anything not scheduled for public hearing? Okay, seeing no one in the room, anyone online?
Yes, we have a couple of virtual hands up. Mr. Rob Pattinson has his hand up first, so, Mr. Pattinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson of Sciou Township. I was happy to see the letter from Doug in the agenda packet tonight. It seems that the theater developer has narrowed down their options a little bit, and I was very uncomfortable with their previous presentations to the board asking the Planning Commission to give them basically a blank check. They wanted to know what in the universe of things they could do, they can do. And it seems to me that's what the zoning is for, and the Planning Commission is about evaluating a presentation for its suitability for the township. And I hope that that's how you proceed in the future. In Bob Hyde's report from the Huron River Watershed Council, he talked about a lawsuit in Canton Township about tree cutting. I'd be very interested to hear more about that and how we think that might impact Sciou Township. And also, there's a link to the meeting at the end, and the link that's on there is for a Planned Parenthood thing. Are we sure that that's the right link for the Zoom meeting?
I'll double-check it, Rob.
Okay. And if you get that, please email that to me, and I'll put it up on the video in the description, and then people will be able to link to it. That's coming up relatively soon, so.
Yeah.
And then also, in Reiser's report to the Planning Commission, he had several paragraphs on the LPC meeting. And in fact, tonight at the Dexter Township meeting, they're talking about doing some annexation of the property off of Baker Road. And so I would highly recommend the Planning Commission view the latest LPC meeting on YouTube to help understand what's going on there. Gillian Carey came up with some documents that that annexation process had been tried in 1985 and 1990 and had been rejected by the county. So there is some history there, and I think the Planning Commission should be aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Do you have another hand up, and that is Jonathan? Jonathan, you have the floor.
Thanks, I'll be quick. Just noticed in the packet that one of the proposals for the theater is three to six-story There is no circumstance where we should be approving six-story buildings here inside of township until we have the infrastructure, mainly fire support, to make that type of building safe. Okay? I don't, despite other accusations earlier by the board members that this board or this subcommittee, commissions, sorry, that we want to limit growth, and so we oppose these types of projects. We don't have a ladder truck, and we're talking about a six-story building. Please, Planning Commission, don't approve anything until we have the infrastructure to protect people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
There are no other, although there are a few people in the line, there are no other hands.
All right. Just wait just a couple more minutes or seconds, just to be sure. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
So.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing public comment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at 7:07. And we'll move on to our scheduled public hearing this evening. Just to give everyone an overview of how we conduct the public hearings, first, we hear from the applicant, and then commissioners can ask clarifying questions of fact. We also hear from our consultants. In this case, it'll just be Carlisle-Warkman because this is a conditional use.
I actually think OHM did provide.
Oh, they did provide a, okay, pardon me, then also from OHM. And then any other questions of fact, and then we open it up for the public. And we generally ask people present and then those online. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for conditional use 23005 PSP number 23002 Nicholson, conditional use for self-storage facility at 7:09. So if the applicant will introduce themselves and.
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening, Commission. My name's Tom Colbert, I'm with Midwestern Consulting. I'm here tonight with Nick Donofrio from Grand Sockwa, the developer of the project, and Council's Scott Menzel. Many of you, I think most of you were here before when we came before you with the project that was the rezoning of this parcel of land off of Jackson Road. Just for some context, zoom in a bit here. This is the site. It is owned by the Nicholson Trust, it's south of Jackson Ave. It is east of Three L's Drive, west of Thetford, and a bit east of Baker Road. This is Baker Road here, to our west. If a landmark might be the barn that exists on Jackson Road, kind of close to the road, it's like a three-story tan barn, we're just to the east of that, in the east of Three L's Drive.
Is it on Jackson Road?
It has frontage on Jackson Road and Three L's Drive. What I wanted to talk a bit tonight about here is what our self-storage is not. Our self-storage is not rows and rows of cars, or campers, or boats, or anything like that. We are interior climate-controlled self-storage. We're not moving supplies for sale, we're not rental trucks, we're not buildings with a bunch of exterior access, like you might see in some older self-storage facilities. Everything's interior at our site. What humidity-controlled self-storage is, are storage units that safeguard people's belongings from high humidity and extreme temperature swings. There's a very good quality HVAC system that works to control the temperatures and humidity levels, stabilizing them so that there's no risk of moisture or mold. Our self-storage is all interior, there's no external storage, temperature and humidity controlled, no U-Haul rental. We're actually a very low-traffic generator in the AM and PM peak hour. Our calculations show that we're about six total AM peak hour trips and about 10 PM peak hour trips. We're no sales of moving supplies, boxes, tapes, those kinds of things. It is a high-security facility, there are cameras and things that control entrance, and we're no dumpster, so we're not a spot where people can bring their garbage or create garbage from what they've been storing at the site. Typical items that might get stored at a facility such as this is wine, antiques, artwork, film and photography, musical instruments, paper documents, clothing, electronics, furniture, and digital media. Some examples of this are seen in the pictures here. In my opinion, what you'll see here is these start to look like office buildings, kind of like techie office buildings, warehouse, facilities that are slanted towards industrial use, windows, different kinds of materials, more upscale. Interior loading and unloading, so this is much different than what you might have seen in a typical self-storage. You pull your vehicle in, your truck, your car, you park, you unload into carts, you take those carts to your unit, either on the first floor, or there are elevators that you can go to the second floor, and load and unload on the interior of the facility. In our opinion, the project will be a breath of fresh air along the Jackson Road corridor here. Very, the architecture of this building resembles contemporary office research facilities. It would be one of the newer buildings in this area. One of the things that we had supplied for the project was some information about operations at the facility. Office hours, Monday through Friday, would be 9:30 to 6:00 p.m., Saturday 8:30 to 5:00, Sunday 11:00 to 3:00. People would have access to the facility from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There would be up to two employees that would be at the site, probably one to two employees as they get up to lease and census. And then after that, there would be one, maybe two employees, depending on how the facility gets used. There was a note about prohibited uses and hazardous materials. What the intent is with that is that they would be identifying what those materials are in their lease agreement, so there's a process when you, as a user of the facility, would come in to prepare and sign your lease agreement. Hazardous materials would be identified, it would be in your lease that they're not allowed to be stored there. This is very much like what you might see for Cube Spart and other similar facilities, very, very similar to their lease agreement and their national lease agreements for renting space in interior self-storage facilities. We feel, we have received comments from Doug and his team at Carlisle-Warkman, we've also received comments from OHM. You'll see in there that there are highlights to the number of standards and findings per the conditional use. You'll see when you run through that, that the proposed self-storage is compatible with the uses that are allowed in the industrial, limited industrial zoning districts. We've demonstrated by some of our plans what parts of the site may be impacted by the proposed development and what natural features of the site may be impacted. We've also worked with the county road commission, so we have an access, vehicular access off of Jackson Ave and then out on Three L's Drive. We've worked with the road commission and received conditional approval from their office. The use of the site in this fashion as an interior climate-controlled self-storage is not considered detrimental or hazardous or disturbing to the existing future neighboring uses or persons. There's no additional public facilities or infrastructure services that are anticipated for the use of the site in this manner. We have sanitary and water service both in Three L's and at Jackson Ave. And you'll note that the sixth item was compatibility with the township's master land use plan. And as noted in the report, we are in conformance with the township's master land use plan. So with that, our goal tonight is to review with you the conditional use request, share with you a little bit about the project as far as how the operations go. We'd like to gain your support of the project and allow us to move forward with site plan review and those kinds of things. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this to you. If you have questions, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions or clarifications of that? To Mr. Lund. As the record show, that Commissioner Reiser arrived at 7:17.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. So just to kind of remind everybody about the process, I like to do this, I know there's not that many folks here, but it's good to kind of go over the process. So this is a conditional land use, so this is one of the times that the Planning Commission and ultimately Township Board has some discretion in land use. In every zoning district, as I've mentioned before, there's kind of two lists of land uses. One is the use permitted by right, and those are the things that what we call non-discretionary review or approval, when pretty much the applicant meets the minimum standards, the community is pretty much obligated to approve those kind of site plan issues. And then there's another list of uses that are conditional uses, some of which is called the special uses. Another uses that are to be reviewed individually by the Planning Commission because they have been identified at some point in the past. Yeah.
Doug, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but somebody just posted that your microphone isn't on.
Oh. My microphone actually works. I'll try to talk really, so hopefully it'll pick up there. So I was talking about conditional land use, so conditional land use is those listed uses that have been identified in the past by the township as uses that could have detrimental impacts to the site itself, the township, the neighboring properties, and they require a little extra review on the part of the township. And they also require a public hearing so that neighbors within the geography of the property can be notified, they can come out, voice their concerns or support for a project. If this was just a standard site plan, that notification's not given, it's strictly a decision of the Planning Commission. But this is one of those uses that in the past has been identified as potentially having negative, potentially negative impacts on adjacent properties. Conditional land use is those uses that may be appropriate in some locations and may not be appropriate in other locations, and it's up to the township to make that determination. So tonight, we're accepting public comment. I will remind the Planning Commission that in the past, the Planning Commission has taken public comment and sometimes not taken action if there's some public comment that requires to be addressed, or if there's Planning Commission comments that need to be addressed. Kind of is past practice to not take action the night of a public hearing. I know we changed that a little bit here and there, if it's an issue that doesn't seem controversial, but typically speaking, the Planning Commission doesn't take action the night of a public hearing. So with that all being said, the applicant is going over the project, and we'll go with too much into the project description and that sort of thing, but they are proposing a self-storage facility, a little different than other self-storage facilities we've seen here in the township. Most of the existing self-storage facilities would be more of the traditional, you know, whole building type facility with exterior doors, and you pull up and you do everything from that. Typically, an example of a more recent one that's been approved by the township has been the Pirate's Cove Self-Storage, which I believe is west of this location, also on Jackson Road. So this is a little bit different of a facility. So with regard to land use, some of the things we look at when trying to determine if this use would be compatible and meets the conditional land use standards are the current land use and zoning of the sites that surround the property. To the north of this subject site is Jackson Road, but beyond that, there's various commercial and industrial land uses. One of the properties is owned to I-1 Limited Industrial. South of the property is zoned C4 composite commercial, it's existing office industrial area. East of the subject property is existing industrial area zoned I-1, and west of the subject property is Three L's Drive. Beyond that is also zoned I-1 Limited Industrial. So with regard to the existing land uses, this area is surrounded by non-residential land uses. So it's either industrial, commercial, surrounding the property on all sites. The current property is vacant, if you've been out to the site or looked at the aerial photography for the project. So there are no buildings on the site currently. With regard to the master plan, we do point out that the master plan, as you can see on page three of our report, is shown in this blue color, and that blue color is mixed-use office industrial. So this is a district that anticipates office industrial-type uses within the township. And while not a use permitted by right, obviously, one of the uses that is allowed after special review is self-storage facilities. So we don't have any current issue with the township master plan and what the applicant is proposing. With regard to natural resources, again, if you've been out to the site, this site is vacant, there are no wetlands or floodplains present that we could find as would be depicted on the county website, GIS program. The site's fairly level, there are some trees on site that will likely be impacted by the project. Those would be reviewed in more detail at the site plan stage of review. Again, kind of back up on that particular point, this is a two-step process, so right now, we're just looking at the use, you know, would a self-storage facility be acceptable in this location of Sciou Township? And if Planning Commission and ultimately Township Board were to determine that this site was okay for self-storage use, the applicant would then move forward with a submitting of a site plan. That would be a whole separate process at that point. With regard to central facilities and services, this site is within the township's water and sewer service district. Any kind of connections or water use would be reviewed at the site plan review stage. Typically, I will say, though, that self-storage facilities are a low utility user, so we wouldn't anticipate this being particularly impactful with regard to central facilities and services. I know OHM also did a review, so perhaps OHM's, or Stacy who's here, will be able to address potential impacts of the water and sewer district. With regard to traffic and access, we generally agree with the applicant's depiction of traffic on this site. We use the trip generation manual from the Institute for Transportation Engineering when I did our review, and find that the peak-generated trips, which is really what you're concerned with, based on those tables, would indicate about 12 peak trips on a Saturday afternoon, that's when self-storage facilities would be most active, approximately 121 trips all day on a Saturday, but really, we look at more at the peaks to find out if there's impacts. Either of those are particularly impactful numbers, particularly along Jackson Road. So we don't have any issues with traffic generation for this particular use. The property is currently zoned industrial, so if a typical industrial facility, warehouse or industrial building, or an office, which is also a use permitted in the industrial district, if this use was used as something actually permitted by right, not requiring a special land use, we would expect substantially more traffic than what the applicant is proposing. So with regard to the conditional land use part, there are six standards that we are supposed to find, Planning Commission and Township Board are supposed to find. With regard to special land uses, those standards all have kind of circled back to how this property, how the use proposed will impact the township and how and/or the adjacent properties or the property itself. So there's six standards. Our comments are found on pages, of those are really found on page five of our report. And our main issue is how this site will be used with regard to the operation, proposed use, hours of operation, number of employees. The applicant's presentation addressed some of those items, but other issues with regard to compatibility, will it be served, you know, is the project compatible, will it be served by central facilities? Will it be hazardous to the state of reported users? Will it cause additional requirements at the public cost? And will it be compatible with the township master plan? We went over some of those items, but we believe, as presented, the applicant can address those standards, and they did provide some of the information that we asked for this evening in their presentation. So I'm sure the Planning Commission will want to talk about those things, but we think that the applicant can meet those standards. And like many special land uses or conditional land uses, there are some specific standards for self-storage facilities. There are four of those in the Sciou Township zoning ordinance, and those have to do with how the space will be rented. Specifically, no activity of the natural storage units can occur, so you can't use individual storage units for businesses. Sometimes that occurs, this being an indoor facility, that would be probably even less likely to happen, that someone would try to operate a business outside of or within one of these units because it would be so controlled with the access. I know that's not the applicant's intention, but that's one of the requirements. They indicate that this will not occur, but perhaps the applicant can address that in more detail. One of the other standards is that no toxic or flammable hazardous materials will be allowed, that you can't store fuel, you can't store gas cans, things like that. That indicates, we would ask how the applicant will enforce that kind of provision. We want to make sure that does not happen. The third item is that any outside storage or recreational vehicles has to be contained within a building. The applicant indicates they're not storing anything outdoors, stored within a building or screened from view from any neighboring properties. The applicant indicates that there'll be no recreational vehicle storage, and they The applicant indicates that there'll be no recreational vehicle storage, and they kind of went over that in their presentation. And then finally, all exterior walls are supposed to be a masonry construction. In addition to that standard, this property is within the Jackson Road overlay district, so architectural standards will be reviewed in detail at the finals, at, or at the, at the site plan stage of review. So that's a standard that simply will have to be met at the site plan stage of review. And at this point, there are no variances being requested by the applicant, none that we could find that would be needed. We do mention with regard to site plan that, as I just said, this is within the Jackson Road overlay district, so all the architectural standards and so on and so forth will have to be met, but those will be reviewed in detail at the site plan stage of review. And we provide as a recommendation, we have three items, actually, four items, one being compliance with the Jackson Road overlay standards, particularly the architectural control standards. But we have three items that should be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission. I'll go over those items one more time. One, provide a narrative describing the operation, the proposed use, hours of operation, number of employees. Two, indicate how the user will prohibit toxic, corrosive, flammable, hazardous materials from being stored in the facility. Three, the exterior building design materials will be required to meet the Jackson Road overlay, overlay, overlay design standards, and then that is similar to our four items. We have three items that have to be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission. And with that, I'll turn it back over to, to you, Chairperson Pulbertson.
Any questions of Mr. Luhan finding a fact?
I do have a question or two.
Mr. Luhan.
I might have misunderstood what you said, but did you say that the use is permitted by right? Okay, good. And only good, because I didn't think I was hearing the right thing. And I kind of get these, the conditional use confused with the special use, but the conditional use is up to, at the discretion of the Planning Commission in terms of its recommendation?
It is a discretionary approval.
And with regard to your four, your list of three things, we did receive the narrative, right? So that's done. And then we received their list of rules or their requirements for any tenants. So you would consider number two fulfilled as well?
I have not reviewed that, but I will accept that if you.
Well, let me, maybe I haven't spoke, but I was looking at this earlier, the Club Smart Self-Storage Rules and Regulations and Prohibitive Uses. Did you get a chance to review that? Okay.
I think you're onto something, though. If I could interject on that comment, his comment is, how are they going to enforce that? This doesn't address how they're going to enforce it.
I see.
So I'm not quite sure that the answer is they've covered it. I don't think they have.
And the number, the third thing that you wanted, I believe you indicated in your narrative today that that was, that was to come with the site plan. Is that?
Yes, that would, that would be addressed at the site plan. The Planning Commission, I just wanted to emphasize to the applicant that that's coming, and there are some additional architectural standards that they're going to have to meet.
And then, once again, the conditional use is approved before we see the site plan? That's the, the process that I have to live with?
Yes.
Right? Okay. And I noticed.
I will say, it's my understanding, and the applicant can expand on this, that their desire, at their own risk, to apply for a site plan before township board approval. They can do that, we allow that to happen before. And so both processes could be running through, no, they have not applied yet for site plan, but that will be forthcoming. And I believe, right, I'm going to put you down for planning at this point, so there will be kind of parallel processes occurring at their own risk, because the township board was to deny this. Ultimately, their site plan would be for nothing.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, unlike our process, when things get to the Board of Trustees level, they will look at the site plan prior to approval?
It's likely they won't, they will not have the site.
Okay.
They'll, they'll only have the same information.
And the other thing I've noticed in your memo was you did not make your standard recommendation. It just said these four items, three items needed to be addressed. Are you recommending this product, our project?
We, actually, that is kind of our standard recommendation. We always, our recommendation is always that the items in our review have to be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
That's pretty.
But you do make recommendations in your memos, but that's okay.
Yeah.
I understand. Your recommendation is that the applicant meets the requirements of our master plan, meets the requirements of our statute.
Yeah, I've gone through and tried to list where I think things have been met or not.
Okay.
And then I've listed a few, the things that my recommendation are those of what I believe are outstanding issues that you guys have to address.
So I'd just say one last question for you. And with regard to this infiltration study, have you had opportunity to review that?
No.
Okay.
Could that be OHM?
Okay.
OHM can help summarize some, shut some.
Thank you.
Still finding a fact?
Yes.
So, Mr. Luhan, in your write-up, you talked about how the ordinance requires that exterior walls be, or shall be, of masonry construction. And I know you also pointed out that this is a different type of self-storage. It isn't separate little buildings that, or rows of buildings. Do they still have to be masonry on the second floor, because you point out that they're not? So what, I don't know what the ordinance requires.
Yeah, well, the ordinance does require that all exterior walls be masonry, so.
To me, that means all the way to the roof.
Okay, they're going to have to either revise it or provide a summary.
I wasn't sure that's what was meant. Thank you.
Any other questions around findings of fact?
Just footprint of the building vis-à-vis the parcel, and is that why they want to do an underground storage, infiltration? Or am I getting that wrong?
Which one?
Water storage.
Infiltration or storage?
Infiltration.
Okay.
Well, I assume it stores it until it infiltrates.
Yeah, so the, you know, I, the preferred storage from the water resources group is infiltration. That is, and there's an actual requirement, and yeah, well, so, and it is a biodetention system, so it does have.
Does it go underneath the structure, or where does it go?
It, it's in the rear.
To the south of that, I saw a brochure.
It's in the site plan document, which, actually, for a conditional use, we're not supposed to be looking at, considering, but, you know, they provided it, so we can see it.
Thank you, Mr. Luhan.
So the, the proposed basin, right, correct?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Is that an exterior or underground? What's?
Surface.
Yeah, Tom, the engineer's here, he might be able to answer that.
You want to answer that, Tom?
Yep, a couple of things, if I might, to answer your specific question with regard to detention, we are not an underground system, we are an at-grade system. And what you'll see when the site plan becomes before you is that we've also included another, a number of BMPs that are something that we've designed into the system, and one of the things that would be useful in that evaluation is the infiltration report that you have, so that's probably in your packet prematurely. The other thing I wanted to say is, when we received Carlisle Wortman's review, on April 18th, we submitted a memorandum to the township, and I think Commissioner Moore's referring to this, which outlines and has narrative information with regard to office hours, the lease with regard to the hazardous materials and what would be done there. So if, I see a lot of head nodding, so I assume that that's what you were referring to, Commissioner Moore.
Okay, with the rules and regulations?
Yeah, it, it talks about hours of operation, the time that the facility would have access, and then the number of employees and the prohibited use, uses, and a sample copy of what's another facility in the township does. I do have extra copies, if you don't have a copy of that, that I.
I did get that, but I just, like Commissioner Hyde pointed out, and I thought this was good, so I appreciate that, and, and I thought it was great that you guys have that. But I think what Commissioner Hyde was pointing out, that Mr. Luhan's memo was referring to is how would you regulate that? How would you make sure that your regulations are being enforced by your tenants?
Yeah, what you.
Are being, are being adhered to by your tenants, I should say.
I want to answer that right now. So it is a facility that would have video, so if, and there'd be employees there during certain times, so there's surveillance and so on, and if those materials were seen to be brought into the facility, they'd be asked to be removed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so Scott just reminded me that on the application, they are supposed to give indication of what their intent is to store there. So with that, they would have an understanding of intent, and then there's observation and the, the video that would see what you're bringing in and out and so on.
A follow-up question, does management have the right to enter the, the, the storage units?
Yes, they do.
Commissioner.
Natural, and just sidewalks there, right? That's one of the things I get hung up on sometimes, is sidewalks, it's there, and that's not going to be an issue, correct? And natural landscape, giving them a pass on the trees, that's, it's their intention to comply with the ordinance with respect to natural resources, trees, bushes, all that stuff? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. How relevant, we have heard this before in previous meetings, too, of this subject and today also about the firefighting capabilities. How relevant is that point raised by a member of the public? And you know what I'm referring to, the height of the building, worst of the equipment we have. Is that a relevant point being brought up or not?
Well, I mean, it's certainly irrelevant.
I mean, relevant to what extent and within reason or, or unreasonable? Again, I'm not, I'm at loss on this one.
Yeah, well, I don't think they were talking about this particular site. I think they were talking about our next item, next agenda item.
Oh, they're not talking about this one?
No, no.
Okay, then, then I'll focus on that question. And in a previous meeting, when we had the owners of the restaurant, that facility, in that complex, shop owners, they had brought up this issue about their business not being necessarily compatible with this kind of business. Again, since the last meeting, did the township look into that issue to understand?
Again, the next item on each.
Why?
That's the next item.
That's the Goodrich.
This is a totally different site.
Okay.
Yeah, this is 3L's Drive and Jackson Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, not the PUD amendment. Yeah.
All right.
We will get to that.
We will get to that. Yeah, all right, then we'll move to OHM. Oh, you want to have another?
I do, I do.
Sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Hyde.
So I have a question for both applicant and Mr. Luhan. Is the rear of this site, does it have any issues with the adjoining property? Was that the, the same property line that was, or am I remembering a previous application incorrectly? Where there was a building, it's like, the rear that would. It almost seemed like there was a property line issue.
No. I don't recall, but there was an attorney here. And they might be able to answer this question.
Yes, Scott Monzel, I'm the attorney for Grant Stockwell, 301 North Main Street in Ann Arbor. And I, I wanted to let you know, we've spoken with all of the neighbors that join the property, including the one to the south. There's no issue with property line, and he, everyone is aware of what the plans are, and, you know, there's a variety of uses, manufacturing, there's auto repair, there's kind of a storage facility, there's kind of a office-type use. So none of the adjoining property owners have voiced any kind of objection or have any problems with the proposal.
It was, it was a drain field on a storage building.
I, I don't recall.
I will, I will have to look into that, and it obviously is a different.
I think it may have been the Pirate's Cove self-storage. Because there was a neighbor to the south that was concerned about drainage on the property.
Okay. And the only other question I had was how, I know this will come up in the site plan review, but could you describe briefly how the building will be entered by somebody who's making use of their storage unit? They'll drive in from the front and drive out the side, or how is it?
Yep, if you were visiting as somebody driving a vehicle or a pedestrian, you'd come from Jackson, either the walk or the, the Jackson Ave. It's one-way there, you turn into our facility on the curb cut from Jackson, you'd have the opportunity to park on the north side of the building there, or continue around and enter in the northernmost bay of the loading, unloading area. So the building is a rectangular, and then there's a long, narrower rectangle next to it. That's where you would enter through a overhead door.
From the west side of the building?
It is on the west side, but the door is facing to the north.
Door faces to the north. Okay, so you come in from the front, as you come off Jackson Road, all the way to the right?
Yep.
Okay, and you enter the building there?
Yep.
Drive into your unit. Is that how the fire department would have to enter if there was an entry?
Yep, so we've actually had a number of conversations with the fire chief. We've shared our plan, show how the truck would get through the site. You can actually get the truck into the site from either entry and make it around and out. We have proper hydrant coverage between the hydrants that exist on 3L's and the hydrant.
Site review.
I just wondered in general.
Our review is actually pretty brief tonight. We recommended approval of the conditional use in our letter from March 22nd. It appears to be compatible with the existing infrastructure based on our preliminary review. Like Doug mentioned, the self-storage use is generally a pretty low user of water and sewage, so we don't foresee that being an issue. And we did not provide any site plan comments at this time in our letter due to the preliminary nature of the plans. Those will be provided once the applicant formally submits. I'd be happy to answer any utility-related questions if you have any at this time, otherwise, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for OHM?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So have you reviewed this infiltration study?
Not yet, no. Generally, that will be part of the site plan and even detailed engineering review once we dive into the stormwater calculations.
Well, you know, since we've had a couple of problems with infiltration, stormwater systems, I'm keen to, I appreciate getting this information ahead of time instead of two or three days before we have a meeting, but I am paying attention to those things. In your review of the property and the project, do you, are you anticipating, or have you, have any? have any concerns about the topography and what the needs of the project would be? I mean, can you give me a little bit of idea about your view as an engineer about this project on that piece of property?
Yeah, I don't foresee any issues with the stormwater management. The applicant did provide that infiltration report and even stormwater calculations on their plans, we just haven't reviewed them yet. Like I said, that's typically the site plan phase, and then Water Resources will also be reviewing these plans. So both their office and our office will make sure everything is good to go before approving it.
So I'm glad you brought that up about water resources, because I feel like I'm in the dark about that on various projects. So, I mean, this isn't going to be a high, a high-use project on the water system, but when you do report to us about that, the water usage, will you be coming with some facts, some figures, so that we understand if they're under or over the allotted amount? And where does that leave us in our total usage after that? If that's something that you could report to us in the future about, is that...
Yeah, are you talking about the...
Does that question make sense?
The sewer usage?
Water sewer?
Okay, yeah.
So, because I, because as I understand it, each property along the Jackson Road has so many, I forget the, thank you, REUs, and that are allotted for each property. And I'd like to know in these projects, are we within those REUs? And that, I understand the REUs are relative to wastewater, right? Okay, so are we within the REUs and are we within the water usage? Because we also have a contractor that provides that, and I understand each property has fresh water, so much fresh water allotted to them. Now, again, this project is not a high intensity like a use of water, like a, what was the, like a car wash or something, but I'm looking to have that reported to us, and so I'm just asking that we know what those figures are when it's time to report on the preliminary site plan.
Yeah, of course. I will say that sometimes we don't know the anticipated REU usage until the detailed engineering phase. Sometimes we know that in the site plan, but that's generally required in detailed engineering. But if we do know it in advance of approving site plan, we can certainly give a update on where things stand. This project, you don't have anything to worry about, there's still quite a few left in terms of REUs, so this one shouldn't be an issue, but certainly on larger projects we can provide that information to you.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, one project in particular that shall go nameless, that you're aware of, and so are we, is that we had issues come back to us about the stormwater system, and part of the problem is, is in our process, in the planning commission process, we don't even see full site plans, and we don't even see detailed, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of looking around here because her face is at the bottom, we don't even see detailed engineering about that stuff. So we're approving things in some ways in the dark, and, you know, hopefully the board of trustees, I'm sure they'll catch stuff, but I'm just saying, in one particular project, it's become a disaster, where we're trying to think about a drain district and all kinds of stuff. So anyway, I mean, look forward to it, because it's going to be something that I'm going to be asking to know a little bit more about.
I will clarify that the stormwater is not the same as the REU. REU is going to be the sewage, so the stormwater runoff or anything like that doesn't affect REUs.
I understand, I understand.
Just want to make it clear.
I apologize for my novice knowledge of this area. But I just don't want to get caught down the road on a project like that again, so thank you.
I have just a question of Mr. Luwans, and that is whether you can condition a conditional use, for example, because this is on Jackson Road corridor, that it would be, for instance, an enclosed climate-controlled self-storage.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, with that, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here in Township Hall that would like to address the planning commission on this conditional use? Public hearing? Seeing none, well, now we're going online, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, sometimes I get...
You're monitoring that.
I start the meeting, sometimes I lose focus of the meeting, but I do see a hand up. So Ryan Yapple, you have a hand up here in the public hearing? You now have the floor.
Good evening, Doug, good evening, everyone. Couple of things real quick, just listening and looking over the documents that were submitted for this. Mr. Sharma, from my time as well as Commissioner Hyde's time on the Fire Services Guidance Committee, our firefighters currently can only really get 12 to 15 feet up in the air of the tallest, our ladders on our trucks, as well as the equipment we have allows us to really fight fires. Anything beyond that, we have to wait for mutual aid equipment from either the city of Ann Arbor or someone elsewhere that has equipment that can do that. This building, when I looked at the site plan documents that the applicant submitted, is currently estimated to be between 30 and 34 feet at its highest point, so we would not be able to fight a fire if it broke out on the roof, for example, with an air conditioning or HVAC unit. One thing I'd like to point out about this, ultimately, the applicant's done a great job of making a beautiful-looking building. I'm still not sure that makes the most sense, given it is a conditional use, it is right on Jackson Road, and this planning commission was very specific. When I went through the conditional use process, about a year ago, on exactly how we wanted to view this corridor, there is four tenths of a mile from where my property is located, 7535 Jackson Road. We made clear that this is a gateway area to the community, and even while they have made a building that does look beautiful, I'm still not sure it's the most appropriate use. Further, one thing that may come up as a problem later on, I don't know if Menard's litigation heavy, but Menard's representative turns out to be a lawyer, so this might cause litigation issues, but beyond that, one other thing I'd just like to mention to the applicant, I understand you don't want to really allow people to throw away trash, something they'll probably require you to have anyway, the dumpster of some sort, even if it's a small one. I didn't see it anywhere on the site plan. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Yapple.
Is Mr. Yapple with our fire department?
No, he was on the Fire Services Committee, is why he was...
I see.
And, yeah, go ahead.
Just one clarification, thanks, Mr. Yapple, for your comments, but the Lo, or the Menard's issue is a little different, because if you remember, they were requesting a rezoning. This is already industrial. Yes, that, so this is not, this is a totally different process that was designed, so totally different situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else online?
No one else online.
Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Riser and supported by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? All right, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed at 7:59. We'll move on to deliberation.
So do you want a motion for purposes of getting the discussion going?
We...
And is there a model motion, or do I just move that the planning commission recommend approval of the conditional use application? I'm prepared to do that, just to get things going, whether it prevails or not is...
You know, that's how the trustees usually do it.
Yeah, right, so I'm...
So you're used to that, and that's not how we go here, that's okay too.
If we had discussion and we came up with items that we wanted to revise the model motion to me, or the motion...
Which would be friendly with all of them.
Yeah, might be.
We appreciate that, don't you?
No, no, I know, I'm just, drop without a motion on the floor, that's fine too.
Yeah, because I think one of the things in this case too is we're not required to take action with a, but if there's a consensus that we're ready to take action, then that makes sense. Commissioner Moore?
I'll start the planning commissioner's discussion.
Yes.
And by saying that I would be in favor of postponement, since we learned in our recent citizen planner training that postponement is postponing an item to another meeting, and tabling is just putting an item at the end of your agenda. So I'm in favor of that, I mean, this is something that's just before us, and I would like to take a little bit more time to contemplate the project. And I would just also say that I'm not, I'm not, not in favor of the project, excuse me for my inartful language, but, so that's all I wanted to say about the project. And the only other thing I wanted to say was, I know we've been talking about a study for the Jackson Road corridor, incorporating more mixed use, and when I'm using the word mixed use, I'm talking commercial and residential, and here we are, we can barely get the study going to figure out what we're going to do with Jackson Road, and I'm concerned about the plethora of projects regarding storage. We got a lot of, so that must be a really good business, and less, and less complicated, because there seems to be a lot of people interested in the Silo Township for a storage enterprise. So I have some thoughts about that and how this project, I get it that it's owned industrial, I get that, but I'm concerned about that, the future planning along that corridor.
I second, and I think she read my mind, I, I mean, everything she just said. We are seeing a huge, huge influx of this, this kind of business here, and I'm myself quite impressed that we're becoming the mecca of storage facilities at this rate, and, which is fine, totally fine, but the problem is that you have a different vision as well, a vision which we talk about often, and which we need to also realize, not just talk about. So I fully second, and more, Commissioner Moore's point of view, she said it very articulate, in a very articulate fashion.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Hyde.
It isn't that I'm against storage, it's that we are, I did want to bring up that we're in the process of getting ready to talk about what we want to see Jackson Road look like, and one of the things that I might say is by going into the conditional uses rather than the by rights uses, where we are allowing things to be in there that aren't necessarily envisioned when you set up, I mean, yes, it's a potential, but it's not an industrial use. This is, I wouldn't call self-storage a business that's making product, so it isn't, and this isn't a primary use for the, for the zone, so I'm a little concerned because we are going into this secondary, secondary applications for uses. While we're still trying to get a conversation going about how we want to fit.
I'm just curious, I'm further prepared to support this tonight for the conditional use, and I have probably more questions at the site plan stage, but are we, for the other commissioners, are you looking at possibly postponing it because you want to look at the kind of the future land use here, or mixed type use as opposed to the, I'm just, I'm wondering if it comes back in the next meeting? What are the questions that they'll have to respond to?
Right, and I don't know what our timing is for having the conversation about Jackson Road, it may be too late for this one, because if it isn't coming up in the next meeting or two...
It's going to be, I think it's going to be, it's probably going to take a good, you know, what, six months, a year, or something like that?
Before we can have the conversation?
No, but we'll have the conversations, but before we can, yeah.
What's going to take a year, six months to a year?
To change.
To redo the planning for the Jackson Road corridor?
To complete it.
Yeah, we were just budgeting for that.
No, I understand we're not going to complete it in the next meeting or two, but if we're going to begin the conversation... Then, then it would be appropriate for me to postpone this discussion, but if we're not going to start that for another couple of months, then I wouldn't, I would not defer, make them wait until then. I just wanted to get that set, that that is a concern, I know we're going to have the conversations shortly, how soon, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a dilemma, because, you know, there's only so many parcels up and down Jackson Road, and why would we even spend the money on a study if we're not going to, I mean, if it's not within our vista to be able to implement something of mixed use, residential, commercial, because, I mean, maybe I'm wrong about this, since I've been a commissioner, projects have been coming to us fairly frequently and steady, and that's not a bad thing, it's just that it's faster than we can take in what we want to do with Jackson Road, that's our dilemma. It's not that, it's not that this is a particularly bad project or anything like that, but it, so that's, I'll just put that out there.
So, I mean, so, I mean, that's a fair point, if we have that plan, a plan to revisit the Jackson corridor plan, and so on and so forth, then what do we do? If it is, it probably is in our best interest to focus on that first and foremost then, and not look at a longer duration, like you said, six months, 12 months, but try to expedite and give it more focus, which the burden falls on this group essentially, because we owe it to Silo Township to develop that vision in a manner that can benefit Township many decades from now, but any mistakes made today may unnecessarily hurt us tomorrow. So if it's six to 12 months, then maybe we have to do something about it, take it to the highest leadership level, that we need to move this forward, I guess the budget is approved now, so maybe that's no longer required, that concern is no longer relevant, but perhaps it should have been done faster, sooner rather than later, early, the budget process, but regardless, that's water under the bridge. But going forward, we should probably focus on this, because if we, if we, if we are envisioning this whole thing and trying to create a vision, if not, then we don't have to worry about it.
Be honest about it.
Yeah, then we, then we can do whatever, whatever comes our way. Again, I, I'm not sure this is a correct point I make, but let me put it this way, when this whole master plan for Silo Township was created many, many decades ago, Silo Township was different, right? So is that kind of reason why we have a lot of flexibility in the use of...
Well, I think that, just to answer...
The master plan?
Just a couple, because the master plan is relatively recent, first of all, it was approved in 2021.
No, not that, but that one, but I mean...
But the Jackson Road corridor, we haven't looked at in a while. Now, there, I guess there are two things here, one, you know, it is an industrially-zoned property, so...
And when was that done, kind of, maybe decades ago?
It was actually relatively recent, because the, all the adjacent uses are industrial.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I think it was rezoned in 2022.
Yeah, just recently, it was on, by the end.
Yeah, but prior to our conversation about the study of the Jackson Road.
So, so because we do have some discretion, you know, that with a conditional use, if it were a by right industrial sort of use, we wouldn't have that ability, and I don't think it, you know, it, you know, we don't want to do a moratorium while we study something, but anyway, I guess I'm a little bit torn, because I do think that this is being enclosed and controlled climate storage, it puts it in a little different, and it is subject to the overlay district, so from a, a building... So from a building orientation, the materials and so forth, you know, that's, that's, it's a little different than, yeah, than the typical kind of storage system. You know, whether or not this, you know, this conditional use certainly isn't detrimental to adjacent properties, it's just, you know, kind of weighing the lost opportunity. And frankly, the, because this fronts on the industrial drive and has a very narrow frontage on Jackson Road, the impact is relatively, you know, limited compared to some of the other parcels that we could look at for multifamily or something like that. You know, I'm not sure, you know, we've got a large piece of property next to Thetford, but that's a pretty viable business at this point, maybe in, you know, you know, the next generation, it may be different, but that's, you know, quite a bit of time. So that, I don't know, I'm sort of torn with this one. Do you want to?
Yeah, if I can kind of.
Yeah.
So part of, you know, part of what we have to do is review documents and plans based on our current ordinance, current master plan. And one of the things that is always important to look at is what could happen on this site as permitted.
And that's what my point was going to be citing 36-67 districts.
Everything else.
Per N16 limited industrial and what could be there. And what could be there are manufacturing, including pipe and molded and extruded products. What could be there conditionally is a tool and die shop or vehicle repair. There are a lot, listen, I'm not in love with storage and I don't use storage, but the facade on the drawings look pretty good and it is, after all, industrial. So, you know, I don't think we're going to get that microbrewery there, folks, that people are going to drive to on this limited industrial. You know, we're the ones that have these folks coming here because of the way we've zoned it. I don't mean this body here necessarily, but it is, it is light industrial, so, so, I mean.
Well, it's not an industrial set of jobs either. You're not going to have 10 people working machinery all day long either, so there is that.
I don't know if that's good or bad, or just, like, there are a lot of things, you know, under 16 per N, under per N16 limited industrial that could go there that we probably want less, either by right or conditionally. So I guess some are kind of cool, but, you know, this isn't that application, you know, like an artist and pottery in a recording studio, you know? That sounds hip. You know what I mean?
They're not arguing about that.
But that's not proposed.
Yeah, yeah, right, but, but conditionally, self-storage under C5 is allowed.
And nobody's arguing about that, nobody's arguing about that.
Right.
I think the argument is different. It is whether, what's our vision? That is the point. I don't think anybody's arguing about that.
Actually, it's not, I don't, yeah, go ahead.
But our vision is to respond to their petition as they've done. I mean, that's kind of, we, there's the big picture vision, but there's also the application before us.
Yeah.
That comports with code.
Right.
I mean, so there's the dilemma.
I'm aware of that. So again, you, yes, you're right, absolutely right, but again, what do you want to do? I guess is the question. Do we approve it? Because we have to approve.
Well, that's up to his or her.
That's a good point, that's a fair point, but the point.
And, and I don't know, you're going to have to vote what, what your analysis of our code and what there is. I'm prepared, like Commissioner Chen, to, to support this because it's light industrial, it's a conditional use, it, it, they're doing right by the environment, this is why I ask about that, the sidewalks are there, that they're going to do the trees, they've got the, the pond in the back like they're supposed to, they're, they're not asking to like, for special favors with respect to environment, that I, that I consent, and they've got an attractive facade, and I think maybe you brought up that, you know, you, they can't half-ass it and go concrete block from the second story up, it's got to be brick, it's got to be, be brick, and I'm sure that.
It's got to be masonry.
Or, or, yeah, so, whatever, whatever that is, but, but, you know, I'm prepared to support this, at least I appear to, at least I think, that's my current thinking now, but if Commissioner Moore or others need time to mull it over, I'm not opposed to that either, but at some point, we're going to have to take this up before our master plan gets changed.
Well, not the master plan, but the Jackson Road district.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to bring up that we are in the process of, well, we're just thinking about it. I'd like to see us in the process of, and begin that discussion so that we won't have that hanging out there before we take action on two or three more.
Now, if they want to, if we want to talk to them about, gee, what do you, what about an electric vehicle charger? Can you charge your vehicle while you're there? Or if they're, you know, I don't, I, I'll leave that to this body or, you know?
Same plan stage.
What's that, what's that?
That's in the same plan stage.
No, but, but, you know, I mean, if there are those discussions that.
We can give them a heads up.
You know, I'll leave that to you folks to tweak it in that regard.
Yeah. I, I guess I would want to condition it on it being enclosed in climate-controlled self-storage for two reasons. One, the enclosure is really important because of its position on Jackson Road, and two, that it's climate-controlled, a lot of the self-storage that we've got isn't climate-controlled, so this at least provides, and to, you know, a service that we don't have, even though it, it's storage, climate-controlled is a whole different, it, it's a different.
Isn't that what they asked for?
What?
Isn't that what they proposed?
Yeah, but, but if we just say we approve self-storage.
Oh.
It could be any kind of self-storage.
Make sure.
Yeah, and what I think is important here is it's one building, it's a map, you know, a building mass, it's, it isn't a bunch of little garage doors. And so it can conform visually, you know, they're talking about the form-based code kind of thing, that if it has, you know, the, the form of X, Y, Z building closer to the, to the road, that kind of thing, then it is, you know, the use doesn't matter as much as the, the form and its relationship to the road.
Do you consider Jackson Road overlay district to be almost a form-based code?
It started, yeah, it was, it, it.
It defines locations.
It's more about form than use.
But it, it isn't completely a form-based.
It was a, it was a form-based light.
Light, form-based light, I like that, yeah, that's what it was.
So we at least have that. And then you're saying climate-controlled, they say climate-controlled interior self-storage. So if we use all those words.
Yeah, I think that was, that would be important.
Those are their words. I'd be comfortable.
I think they're.
Okay. Mr., Commissioner Hume, did you want to say something?
Sure, yes, I wouldn't mind sharing thoughts. I've said in the past, I think on the Menards request to do this, that I couldn't think of a worse use of land in C-5 Township than a self-storage facility. However, I have to side with Commissioner Reiser and Commissioner Chang in that currently we do allow for this, at least conditionally, in a, in a sense, we have to allow for it somewhere in our township. Looking at the surrounding area, if we're going to allow it somewhere, this seems like a better place than nowhere. I agree that it would be great if we could have a different vision for Jackson Road and to have people come up with something more than just self-storage facilities to propose in these areas. But I think that that change has to happen outside of a, a conditional rezoning application. I think that that needs to happen before they get here. So with everything that's out, I would, I would support approving this. I probably would not make the motion or second it, but I would support it.
Okay.
Well said.
All right, then, I, I see the petitioner would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was appropriate during deliberations, but.
I can recognize you.
That's why we ignored you. That's why I kind of went up and down. No, but if I could, to speak to some of the concerns that you have raised, in a way, you know, you're somewhat limited by the parcels that come before you. I mean, this is a parcel that's vacant, 3.5 acres, you know, you're, even though you may have a vision that you want to implement for the Jackson Road, you're going to be restricted by what is already there. And one of the problems, let's say for this site, it's three and a half acres, it was for sale for a long time, there's not many pure industrial users that are going to need a little site like that. It is sandwiched between two manufacturing facilities right now, Thetford and Huzak, and there's an auto repair facility to the south. You're gonna have some real limitations on who would want to go into that particular site, regardless of the visioning, which I can appreciate, and, you know, that's, that's a great thing, but you just may not be able to get there with this particular site, given the reality of the lay of the land. And so I just wanted to note that, you know, it, it has been for sale for a long time and it's got some limitations on who would want to go there. And then, you know, obviously it was, it was, it's been stated that it does actually meet all the conditional use standards that you have in your ordinances, and it is consistent with the master plan, so, I mean, there are some good reasons to, to support it. So that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, this will be our, yeah, our last one, and then we'll entertain a motion.
I don't want to, it's not really an apology, but I used this to push us to get going, you know, to point out how important it is to get going on our revisioning of Jackson Road. Use you as an opportunity.
Then we both entertain a motion.
Well, I don't want to jump something if there's a motion to table, or to use the nomenclature, postpone, not table, cene diem, but if, if, if you need to push it off for a month or two weeks or whatever to consider it, I'm fine with that either. I don't want to give the bums rush to something that this body isn't prepared to deliberate on or to, to vote on, you know? I'm going to defer to you on that. I mean, I'll make a motion, but I don't want to do one, you know, if, if you need some time to consider it. I want to respect that concern you have.
Well, so listening to everybody's comments after my comment, and I thoroughly understand what everybody said, and I think there's some credence to everybody's remarks, but I will be voting down the motion to approve the project, not because I'm against storage, but because I want to move this body to do the job they said they want to do. Now, if you don't want to do it, we don't have to do it. I don't think that that's best for our community. I know what the statute says, I mean, the ordinance, I apologize. But we have discretion here. And I'll just end it by saying, if the study's a year away, that's way too long. I think I've already addressed that when I said there are only so many parcels left. So I will, you can go ahead with your motion. I think the discussion allowed things to be flushed out tonight, and I'm going to vote against it because I think the planning is a major piece that's missing in this township. We, projects come, and that's, you know, not any fault of the applicant, projects come here and we just vote on it. We look at, we look at the statute, it's very technical, the memo from our consultants are very technical, and we move along, and the process carries itself. We're not, we're not in command of the process. Process is set up to approve or not approve or whatever, move it along.
I appreciate.
And I, I'm, you know, one of the things I learned at the Citizen Planner seminar is that part of our role, our statutory role, is to plan, not just vote on projects. So which I was really, you know, I wanted to say that, I haven't had a chance to Commissioner Rakish, that when he asked that three years ago about what's the plan, what's the overall plan, he got shot down. And I didn't know enough, but I do think that people ought to be thinking about that, not just project to project. And I'll just leave it at that.
I appreciate, how do we get them to come knock at our door aspect of planning versus like, what do we do when they're knocking at the door today?
Yeah.
That dichotomy, that dilemma.
Yes. I, I think there is a missing piece for that, as well as how to move it forward, how to get us going. I mean, I think, in all fairness to Chairperson Colberson, I think she's trying to do that with the study, it's just that, you know, we're, we have a, so, you know, I don't want to repeat myself.
I think we'll look at, if we don't have time in our current agendas, we'll schedule some working sessions, and that's a way we can speed it along.
Excellent idea.
Okay. All right, so, I think.
I guess I would move that the planning commission approve and recommend approval to the board of trustees, the conditional, I want to get the nomenclature right, is it, it's?
Yeah, you can read it on the, let's go back to the.
It's regarding partial H-08-20-200-10 located at 7155 Jackson Road, the conditional use and that the six standards contained in our ordinance 36-224 having been satisfied. One, that the proposed use will be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives and regulations of this ordinance. Two, that the proposed use will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. Three, that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police and fire protection, drainage ways, refuse disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. Fourth, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons, property, or the public welfare. Five, that the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for public utilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And that six, the proposed use will be compatible with the township's adopted master plan.
Friendly amendment?
And, 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 and I would ask support for that, and I'd open to any friendly amendments.
Quinn, you talked about the proposed use, you should, we should insert the words right there that Chairperson Colberson was trying to get us to put in there, that would be the climate-controlled interior self-storage usage.
Or the proposed, the proposed use as a climate-controlled.
Interior self-storage.
Interior self-storage.
As presented by the.
As presented by the.
That would be good.
Thank you. Is there a amount of motion, by the way, but?
No.
We just got to wing it.
We're winging it.
All right, give me a little slack here.
I would second that.
Normally we do.
So moved by Commissioner Reiser and supported by Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you, ma'am.
Further discussion?
The items that are, the items to be addressed, those can be picked up in the sites.
And they were addressed by the men, the response, yeah.
Oh, hours of operation.
This is just the usage.
Right, yeah, so it was in the memo in response to the review, basically, yeah.
One more discussion item, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, for saying we need to actually plan these things. I think that is essential, that we can get in front of the next storage unit that comes in our office. So please let's start.
So, please, let's start.
And I also want to point out that, as the applicant said, that this facility will be fully suppressed. So, that definitely aids in the firefighting issue.
Look forward to seeing the plan.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Human?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
No.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
So noted. Guys, we're gonna have some working sessions. That's the way to speed it up. As long as our planner can keep up. Do you need a five-minute break? Okay, yep. We'll take a five-minute or less break. Okay, we're back, and it's 8:39. And we have unfinished business, possible action Goodrich Theater PUD amendment. And we have a memo from.
How's the memo?
Mr. Juan. Yes. I'm sorry, my computer decided to. So, do you want to briefly review your memo?
Yeah. Yes, it's a brief memo. And, you know, I just keep shutting off. Someone remind me if the key screen goes blank. I'll turn it back on. So, the applicant was, was with us previously late February, and provided a, based on our comments in February, provided a updated list in early March of this, of last month, with a request, with quite a reduced number of uses that they were thought would work on this site. They tried to tailor those based on what the Planning Commission's comments were previously. And that's really what's to be forced. The only, the outstanding question that the applicant gave to me that I did forward to our Township Engineer, OHM, was with regard to sewer capacity. OHM did get back with me on that question. And Stacy's here, so I'm sure she can fry a little more information. But I guess kind of goes to a question that Commissioner Moore had earlier, and that's what happens with remaining capacity of the sewer system. And to my understanding, that sewer is a more important, more critical issue than water. I don't know that water capacity is as critical of an issue, but, and sewer is always kind of the limiting factor in development more than water. But that question was asked, and generally speaking, the response for OHM was that there is remaining capacity. So residential project, I should say, the capacity wouldn't be enough to hold up a residential project like this. However, of course, they didn't, they can't give us a definitive answer because they don't know exactly what is being proposed.
Number of units, yeah.
But their general thought was that, yeah, there is capacity in the system, and that that would not restrict this residential development, or perhaps other residential developments, along the corridor at this time. We haven't reached that critical stage yet where we have to start worrying about that sort of thing.
So, can I ask a question? Like, who's the keeper of the capacity? You know, like, the, I don't know, the king of the flushes, or however you want to say it. Is there like some benchmark on there? Or like, you know, that's a pledge drive, and the thermometer's going up? Or are, are there metrics that are available?
Contract.
No, 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 I know, I know, but there's a contract. But like, how do we know at any given point? How do developers know at any given point?
It's a great question.
You know?
Absolutely.
Transparency, all that stuff.
It's not a hard science, put it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to steal Stacy's thunder or OHM. But there, as was mentioned, there is a contract amount, and I'm not an expert at this. But there's a contract amount of flow that the city will accept, obviously.
Is that the REU?
Yeah, yeah. REU is residential equivalency unit. So that's, that would be the, that's the amount of sewage that a single home would, that's how they kind of measure it. So, an REU is one home. And so we measure, so, commercial and industrial uses, depending on the use, have more or less than one REU. And mostly, if it was an office building, it would have more than one REU. If it was like a self-storage facility, it might have less than one REU. And so there are, every use can, the use can be, every use, based on the REUs, we can determine how much sewer we're gonna send to Ann Arbor. And then there is a capacity. There's, there is an end game with how much they're willing to accept. So that's, so we can begin to determine that. I don't know if OHM or the city has asked, excuse me, the township has asked OHM to prepare a definitive report at this point. I think some of that has been done in the past. I'm not sure it's been updated with any real significant numbers recently.
Because there's REU units allocated currently now for the movie theater, correct?
Yes.
And is that the only usage of the REU within that PUD currently?
Yes.
That one, that one structure?
Yeah, so, well.
No, 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 the other two buildings.
Yeah, the other two buildings have something allocated to them as well. Now, so my, so here's my brief, my, my understanding of, of this. I've sort of alluded to, I think, I thought, Hyde, Commissioner Hyde. And that is that, generally speaking, every property inside of township within the sewer service district has an allocated number of REUs. So, some, and depending on the use, those REUs may be more than what's needed, or maybe less than what's needed. If, if a property needs more.
Camera went off, forget it.
If the property needs more, then they, they have to petition to the Siouxs Township Board to increase the REUs on that site. And then, at that point, the township has generally accepted those requests, with the understanding there is an endpoint. But, so that's what happens. There is a number, yes, and the township knows that number in most cases. And then if there's a request for more, they have to actually request more. They don't automatically get those additional REUs.
And they get more only if there's more available. But there is more available right now than are allocated.
Yes. And at one point, before the new contract was established for Siouxs Township, and we were down to, I want to say, under 100 REUs available in the entire system. And so that's when the township renegotiated with the city of Ann Arbor. They upped the amount of flow they really did accept. And for many years, it was not an issue. Well, now we're starting to talk about this as an issue again. Because I think that while there's capacity now, I think there's a concern that sometime within the next five, 10 years, that capacity probably is going to be used.
As we develop westward?
Yes.
As we, yeah, as we intensify the development in the sewer district.
So this is the first come, first served?
I can't.
First come in.
It's always been. It's always been a first come, first served, yes.
And I think in discussions, they did, I think it was, was it two years ago or so? I think they did do an updated study. And so, in about every five years, they recommend doing, you know, updating it because the other thing to understand is, one, the leakage in the system, two, the REUs are very conservative. So, with the, with the type of fixtures we have now, et cetera.
Better toilets and more, better piping and.
Right. Typically, one residential unit uses less than, yeah, what they, but there could be a manufacturing process, or someone that, you know, you know, comes in and is, is using. The other thing that we haven't done, we haven't really gone out and identified high-water users, and, you know, to see what could be done to reduce their water use, too. So, you know, there are a couple, there, there's a range of things out there. But it isn't like we have infinite ability to develop.
Water users or sanitary sewer?
Well, they're related.
All right.
Except for, you know, I think a lot of people use irrigation, well, can use well irrigation.
Yeah, my understanding, and I see Stacy turned her camera on.
Oh, good.
She's ready to go.
Hi, Stacy.
My understanding is that, you know, sewer usage is the limiting factor, a much more limiting factor to development than water.
That's correct.
Yeah, so Stacy, did I say anything that was crazy?
Nope. You were spot on. We did the metering. Go ahead.
Can you tell us what the, what the, what limit for wastewater and, or for waste sewage? I'm sorry. Sewer, and what's the limit for water?
Like what's remaining?
Yeah.
There's around 1,200 REUs left in the sewer capacity. That's, to put it into comparison, that's like four Woodview-size developments. And then I do not.
What size?
Woodview. Woodview Commons?
Equal to four Woodview Commons-size developments.
Right, plus or minus. So there's still quite a few left. This Goodrich Theater development really shouldn't be too much of a concern with the sewer capacity remaining, even residential. But like Doug said, we won't really know until an official plan is put together.
And what's the remaining, or the ceiling, what's left on our water?
I do not have that number readily available, but that's something I can look into if that's something you are interested in knowing.
Yep, curious.
It's, it's safe to say, though, that it's much higher than 1,200 REU?
Correct.
Is it also measured in REU?
I'm not sure, to be honest.
And does this 1,200 figure take into account projects that have already been approved? Or is that actual caps, you know?
Yeah, so that'll include all of the recent.
Go ahead, Stacy.
All of the recent subdivisions that are still being constructed, that 1,200 is after those are taken out. So that's like the raw available capacity.
After they're taken.
So you're saying anything that's approved has already been subtracted from the amount?
Correct.
Good.
Is this new capacity available for anything?
Yep.
Anything approved is already.
Okay. All right, then, okay, wanna, we have the mellow.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's it. I think Josh Sardini from Atkins is here, and he can certainly go over his, the list of uses that I provided to you. But these dues, you know, in looking at the minutes of that meeting, these dues seem to have hit on what the Planning Commission was requesting. Just wanted to keep, you know, keep this going and make sure that we keep this on the radar because it sort of fell off.
I do want to make a comment. If it's appropriate right now. So I looked at my notes, Josh, if you will, I looked at my notes from our original meeting, and the list of uses relative to the multi-family was four stories. And on your revised list here, you have three to six stories. So that would be two stories higher. That's not something that we agreed to.
Should I come up here?
Yeah, sure.
Anything, yeah.
You can sit in the well if you like.
No, I'm just.
Just to be correct, Josh Sardini with Atkins, 150 West Second Street, Royal Oak. To answer the question, in my notes from the last two meetings that we had, we talked about per-acre density and height. And the last time we met, what I heard from the commission was wanting to use a range instead of a specific number. So that's why that changed, just like the density is a range, 20 to 30 units per acre, and then on the height, three to six stories. Because depending on, it's kind of chicken and egg, depending on which, and how you do it, or what gets approved on density, or a mixed use could affect the height. And that's why we put a range on there in the, in this most recent application and revised list.
Yeah, I think we have, don't we have an ordinance that speaks to, there can only be so many stories?
Jay Ride?
There, there, when it's a PUD, there's some, but, however, I mean, I guess I have a question procedurally with a PUD. Are we approving that, and they can't go over that? Or, because I'm just thinking, a lot of it depends on the configuration of the density and so forth. So, you know, sometimes you go higher to have more open space. Sometimes you want lower because you want to have a mix of, of multifamily. I think most hotels right now are designed as either four or, for, most of.
Or as a normal hotel.
Or as the normal hotel height. I, I don't know. So is there any, I mean, do we have to just, is this sort of like a cap? But, you know, you're, I mean, it's still under discretion of the plan. I'm just worried that with the PUD, if we say, okay, yeah, six stories, fine, but when we look at the site plan, no, we really don't want six stories. I mean, what, where does it go?
When you get your approval.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the applicant is looking for some boundaries. And so I think that's what we're looking at, is some boundaries. So if we say if, not saying you're gonna do this, but if you were to say, if you were to accept this list, and three to six stories was on that list, and they came in with a six-story building, you'd probably have to accept that.
I agree.
Yeah. However, you know, if you don't want six stories, I mean, this is, this is, the applicant says three to six. They're proposing something to us, you don't have to accept that. So that's kind of where we're at.
Now, if they came back with something that was more, would we have, if it was a super-good plan, and it made all the sense in the world to be taller, could, could we change it at that point? Or are we like saying, no, this is what we're doing?
Well, you would be, because stories is kind of a significant issue. It's not like landscaping or something like that. That would require another, I would say, that would require another amendment to the PUD.
Okay, okay.
You could do it, but they'd have to.
They'd have to go through the public hearing and et cetera, because that makes sense. We had a public hearing.
Correct.
So, if I could, I, I mean, really, what we're after tonight is, we're just specifically talking about uses. We're not talking about a specific site plan, or a mix, or any of that thing. We really would appreciate trying to move that forward so that we could come back with something.
You want possibilities, so you can pitch it.
Right, just possibilities, so we could go to the market and bring something to you along the lines of what we've discussed in the last two or three meetings, and what I think you're ultimately looking for across the district. But, you know, that's, that's why, to answer your question specifically, that's why I changed. It wasn't meant to be anything to try to go quickly or any of that. It was just that we heard in the last meeting that we'd rather have a range versus a specific, you know, data point.
You heard from us that we wanted a range of stories?
Yeah, yeah, I have it, I had it in my notes.
Something about our subcommittee.
Oh, your subcommittee?
No, no, it was in the last.
Oh, no, no, no. Last, kind of, yeah.
And I guess I'm a little bit concerned, I thought we had some regulation on height for buildings.
There is regulation, every zoning district has a height regulation, yes. Now, this is a PUD, so we could, PUDs can be.
We have more.
They can.
Leeway.
The district can be altered.
Commissioner Hyde?
So, I just want to say that you've hit everything that's on my list that I recall by going back over the minutes. So, I just wanna say that you've hit everything that's on my list that I recall by going back over the minutes and my notes. And, and my only big issue is the building height. But I don't know that six stories is too tall. I don't know that three isn't enough to give you the density you want, that we want, without seeing the actual plan. I would have a question first, what, what is the tallest, what is our hotel that's right over here?
Oh, that, that's four stories.
Okay, that's what I was remembering.
That actually received a variance because that's not a PUD, that's just a C3.
But it's acceptable to our fire department. So that, that's, what we have right now, they at least have, okay. I don't know that, I would like to see the fire department weigh in before we go anything over what we already have.
And we do have four and all of those four stories that we've approved, variances or whatever have been suppressed.
Right, so there's things that have to go into the building to get approval, up to four right now. And so without knowing what you really wanna come back in with, which might require an additional hearing if we short you, I would say four max. That's in effect a range, you know, one, two, or three, or four.
Well, could there be a condition on the three to six that it met fire approval and whatever code implications that had to be designed to? I mean, could we do it that way? Cause that, then if we come back and it doesn't meet your fire department approval or a code jurisdiction, then we can't be approved. Cause most anything that we look at would be suppressed. And so, you know, that, that would be a way, you know, just to condition the approval with.
And I know the chief says that you could have, I forget what the wells are called, the pipes that they put in the.
Oh, the stand pipes?
Stand pipes that they put in, I think that they're pre, I'm not sure if they're pre-filled.
Typically, a stand pipe is what they, they, the pumper truck and, yeah, make, to make sure the suppression system.
In this case, there's a water supply, they, they wouldn't have to hook it up to the truck.
Yeah, we, there could be stand pipes or an actual fire pump, to where they're actually pumping and then there's a pressurization at the ground level.
And all that would come in at, you know, site plan approval time, but.
So, is the holiday the tallest building in Sia Township?
I think four stories is the tallest that we've approved. And we've, we've done that in a couple.
Hotel?
Uh, the hotel, uh, and then I believe Crossroads had, we approved a four story there twice.
Yeah, and how about Heritage Woods? It came in at.
It's three.
But they originally were talking two and four, weren't they?
I'm trying to remember.
Two different levels of that, I can't recall.
Yeah, but there have been more that, there've been the four stories, but they've all been suppressed.
So, I think of that presentation that Manny Graywall gave us and the creativity that they used. And I'm thinking, if we were to use some of the concepts, this is the planning that you guys were clamoring for.
Right.
Start planning, Tiger.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, so what would, what could we give a PowerPoint presentation to an adjoining township on what we did and our vision was? So, you know, the, you know, this is where the rubber meets the road on that planning.
Exactly.
So, we've got the opportunity to do something interesting here. Something against, we can get rid of the wastewater, it looks like, with respect to whatever we put there in, in, in a six story structure with residential and the business that would come from residential that could walk to it, bike to it, bus to it.
They put all that in here?
Yeah, yeah, so, so I don't, I don't have problems with the six stories. Now, is, we gotta talk about fire suppression and the ability to put out fires. And I don't know that you put out fires with, you know, on six story fires with fire trucks versus stand pipes and, 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 and suppression systems, you know, but, but, but this has got, this looks promising. That's my reaction to it, I don't know what you think, I, I'm gonna defer to, to you two.
Right, right, no, it looks very promising.
Fresh off the, fresh off.
But we're not too much at us either, we are not super experts.
Fresh out of the classroom. With their little planning certificate.
Yeah, I got my little planning certificate.
Now we are ordering it, so, but, no, this is, this is, this is exactly what we were talking about just half an hour ago. And this is, I would ask a question, it, basic question, I mean, my, excuse me ignorance. Do developers help a township with funds to invest in their firefighting equipment?
Yes.
That's, that's all I would know.
Yes.
So, okay, yeah.
We have one such project.
I'm going to the mechanics.
Although, we do need to.
It's gotta be.
Talk about this too, because, you know, technically, this PUD, this is an amendment to a PUD.
Yeah.
So, which means it's, they've, the PUD has already done their community benefit. So if we want, I, I, you can correct me here, but I would say if there is a large change, if, if they keep the building. Yeah, if they keep the building and renovate the building, you know, great. But if they're going to do a major redevelopment that, that pushes the amount of, for instance, a large multifamily development, there'd be a lot more service calls, et cetera, to it. I would think we would want to have the leeway to negotiate a community benefit. If it's, you know, a reuse of an existing building or something that has a similar type.
Six stories, so it's not reused.
Right, right.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I do think that that would come into play and I don't know how we incorporate that into the amendment.
I just wanted to know the basic detail.
I think how we could do that, because this is, this is unusual, this is unusual, I mean, we've all been here, I haven't been here a long time and somebody's been here. I mean, to have this kind of request for a PUD amendment is unusual. Usually we have an actual, someone comes to us with a use, I understand what they have again, fully understand what they're asking us for. But typically we have a plan that we're reacting to. Well, in this case, they want it, they want parameters of how they can market the site. So what I would suggest to address some of these things is that when the applicant comes back, they come back with what we would call a final PUD plan. And we hold a public, another public hearing so that the adjacent property owners can be notified again of this plan. That we don't just say, this is it, coming with a site plan. That since this is a PUD and they're in the PUD process, that they still have to come back with a final PUD plan. And then we add a condition that a public hearing be held for whatever plan that come before us. That's what I would do.
So, then why are you recommending that?
Because, that, one, so that all this, so that they provide a plan that's consistent with their final PUD site plan, which is typically a site plan. But that would also allow us to start looking at things like public benefit and things like that.
I see.
And wouldn't, that would not take that off the table. And as Jan said, maybe there is no, maybe there's nothing we need to do. If they reuse the existing building, we already talked about, you know, back then we talked about public benefit. But if they're going to a six story multifamily product, then maybe we start needing, maybe we do need to talk about public benefit when it comes to fire suppression and things like that.
So the big question is now how many floors are we ready to accept or consider?
If they have to come back in with another PUD.
Well, just the final PUD's site plan.
Correct. And we've said three to six and they come in with six and what they're doing, for whatever reason we have a problem with, we don't have to give it approval if they don't comply with, if they don't answer our problems. And the only problem I could think of is the ability to fight a fire or not enough emergency exits or, you know, whatever. It's gotta meet standards.
Okay, I'm getting lost. So, do, do we decide right now? Because that way they, they can go to the market.
I think what's before us is to cite, is to agree or disagree with the updated list.
And by this, it's really the updated vision for, perhaps, this is the vision, right? This is, I mean, what you're talking about, the vision, this is what we want there. And while, while we might think it'd be cool to have a six story multifamily with some retail and grocery, at the end of the day, it could be office technology and dental in the old, the old theater. And with the big ass parking lot that surrounds it.
Yeah.
It isn't how they pitched it, but it could be that.
Yeah, so, so we could have a vision, but could, he could have like 10 doctors and dentists lined up in the back of his head that might wanna move in here for the Sia residents, which would be fine under this.
Josh, have you heard anything on the headquarters?
On the what?
The headquarters use? Have you had?
Which, who, a user that's out there?
Yeah.
I don't know which user you're, you're.
No, I, I know you've spoken a couple times about headquarters, headquarters office.
I get calls from brokers, yeah, about the property a lot, but is, in specific to a one specific HQ? No, I haven't talked to anybody in specific about it. But I think our, our struggle, if you will, is more that we need to, we need to know what the rules of the game are so that we can go play the game. I wasn't, I thought before we were going, we were trying to work towards approving a list of uses and then once the list of uses were approved, we would be coming back with a specific site plan for site plan approval, not for a secondary PUD approval, because that, that could quite honestly slow down and tank a deal.
No, we have to, well, we have to amend the PUD.
No, I know that, but, and which, which was amending it with these six or seven uses and their parameters. That's, that's the route I thought we were going. Cause, you know, if, time kills deals and if we have to do things twice, it could have impact on that.
Why move to approve the updated list of uses?
I, I guess I would like to, I would like to see the medical office, dental office to be a, a part of mixed use so it isn't a standalone use.
Well, as I understood it, when we discussed this, any of these could be part of the mixed use.
No, but.
Retail, grocery.
They, they could be, but I think what the chair is asking is that they mu, that that one must be.
It could be a standalone.
I hear what you're saying, it isn't what we talked about last time.
I see, okay.
Unless I missed it, but I don't, I think.
I think you missed it, okay.
I don't, I don't think that one was.
But I, I would like to add that as a, a part of a mixed use.
That would be a requirement?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be a standalone, just medical.
She doesn't want a medical arts building there unless there's a little diner or unless there's a little grocery or retail or something else to bring, to kind of give a little diversity of, of, of customers, so to speak. Is, that's the sense I'm getting from that?
In our minutes from the last, from the previous time, it was, um, this was Commissioner Culberson, Chair Culberson summarized it. The important goal was to bring in more people to the site and utilize, nevermind that. She argued strongly for higher density residential use. She supported apartments, restaurants, bars, entertainment, indoor recreation and lodging as prime uses and did not want the, not so much the other uses, they could be secondary, so. It was primarily, we were looking for residential with associated businesses, that's how I recalled it. So, that's my message today.
Are you a mellow set, Josh?
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just saying, when we talked about it last, we had two that were musts and, and we, we did talk about those very detail. But if we, if that needs to be amended to include that, that's okay.
What are your two?
Uh, retail and grocery, it's on this.
Had to be a part of the mixed use. And I guess just medical office and dental office, I wanted to add to the, of.
Not residential.
It could all, it could all straight be residential, I think we're all happy with that.
Residential plus these others.
No.
No, the others, medical office and dental office would need to have, be part of a mixed use.
It would need to be part of a mixed use.
Well, in order to have those, it has to have.
Okay.
You gotta give us something other than just a medical arts, you gotta give us medical arts plus a restaurant or a bar, plus an office, plus a little grocery, plus a little retail, something like that. That's the sense that I get what you want. But if you wanna do housing, it can be housing and that's it, baby.
So make it simple and straightforward, because after all, it's not our wish list, wishes that alone matter. The market will decide what they, what it wants, right? Not him, not us, the market. So, why not make it simple but also effective? Yes, only housing is one, or any of the others, any of them.
As a mixed use.
As a mix, two, three, four, whatever the ratio, it doesn't matter. Make it simple but straightforward, because the market has to decide, not me or you.
Yeah, I think there was one other one that, that entertainment, indoor recreation.
Whatever.
Which, it, it could be.
Yeah, so.
And lodging, but lodging wouldn't have to be in a mixed use either, because that would support all the other beauty.
Lodging can also come with a restaurant, you know, most, most places have a restaurant in, at least in the US.
And the, I think one of the things is the site already has.
Well, that, that, that's theirs, it'd be a thing, we could have one more.
Yeah, okay.
Because that essentially corresponds with our vision of creating, creating a crowded environment. There's Carlisle Grill and then whatever else comes along. But yeah, I mean, we have to make it simple, so housing, that's it, or any of the above, pick and choose.
At least two of the, the following?
You can make it, minimum stipulation, like a, like a, like a restaurant, pick and choose.
Like whenever they're making it that simple, I, I, you know, I'm, it's like, cause they're, right now I'm looking at eight uses. And we're saying that housing can stand alone, that lodging could stand alone, that indoor recreation and entertainment can be standalone.
Did you say that?
That's what this says.
What does it generally mean?
He's interpreting what was presented to us.
Yeah, yeah, now, I don't know, so you, what's your name again, sorry?
Josh.
Josh, you've probably seen this and you've worked with.
This came from Josh.
This is from me and.
Well, it says Carlisle Warman at the top, so, so.
But, but just to answer, you, you're on the right track. What you're saying, and I can explain each one, multifamily on its own, cause I'm hearing there's a, there's a want for multifamily. The retail, we had said last time, we would agree that it would have to be part of a mixed use, which we defined a mixed use as being two or more of the approved uses on this list.
Got it.
Same with grocery. Office technology research, we said could be standalone, okay? Medical at the time standalone, but I'm willing to put that in as, you know, as part of a, the same definition as mixed use.
Put 7-11 there, you got it.
Restaurant bars as part of the mixed use. And then entertainment, the only difference with that one was, was that it, that the restaurant or bar would not be subject to it and the reason being because we may very well potentially be able to find a replacement use for the existing building needing the parking and so on and so forth, that might include a bar or restaurant and we wanted to be open for that. That's, that's why we talked about that one and then lodging would be standalone on itself as well.
Sorry, in, entertainment, indoor recreation, which may include restaurant bars, but you also have restaurant bars above.
Right, because this, a new, like a standalone restaurant and bar, we were saying has to be part of a, a, a mixed use. But an entertainment or indoor recreation facility, whether it was, you know.
I was getting Rick.
Something like, yeah, had a bar or restaurant, that wouldn't have to have the stipulation that's part, part of the mixed use.
So what would be some, the most likely entertainment, indoor recreation? What would, like, in this day and age?
This day and age, like a family, like I'll call it a family fun center where there might be games and go karts and this and that and all that kind of stuff, but they usually have a, a restaurant that has a bar in it.
How about like those little trampolines you jump on, what is that?
That would be, usually I don't see, I don't see bars, bars in there, but they may sell, they may sell.
It's usually games.
Is it indoor recreation or indoor recreation?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. Or, or the pickle. Or the pickleball or the tennis and the bowling.
Yeah, and a lot of, and a lot of those are mixed up. It might be tennis, pickleball, golf and they usually have a little restaurant and serve beer and wine or whatever. So that would classify as that as well, in my mind.
Would rifle ranges also be considered indoor recreation?
Good question.
I, that's not something.
No, you have to get licenses.
Consider a conditional use, right? It wouldn't be a use.
We did consider the armors to be indoor recreation.
Okay, we did.
We're not looking for another one.
That wasn't one. I understand what you're saying.
What's the signal you're getting from the market? Or any particular examples you can share or you don't have any?
There's people that call from all over that talk about entertainment and recreation, residential, lab, technology space, more restaurants. This list.
Yeah, so if you're amenable to the medical office, dental office as part of a mixed use, which is categorized as two or more of the approved uses on this list, that would work for me.
I will accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, is there support? And how, and we have no leverage if we don't require a PUD site plan for community benefit or if...
There has to be a next step, right? So the next step, which should be probably in your motion, should be either just accept these uses as a final site plan or accept them as a final PUD plan. It makes more sense to me if we accepted them as a final PUD plan. It's not a new PUD, it's just that's the process that a PUD would go through if it's going through a major amendment, which this is going through a major amendment. So it would seem to me that, it would seem to me that the next step for whoever decides to do this would submit a final PUD site plan.
Okay, and then that would be, that would be the last time we would see it. So it's just like requesting a site plan as opposed to, you've got to come back to the planning commission. We want to see it, we do.
Okay, but I do have to ask. I understand that you need to see it, but I will state again, that's not what we were under the guise of, or what we thought we would have to do. But I will say, can, or ask the question, if that's the case, can that final PUD site plan be treated as site plan approval concurrently?
That's what it is. What happens?
But it's different though, because there's a different public hearing about it.
Well...
I'm just waiting to be told on a vote on this.
Be told on a vote?
So I maybe rescind what I said about requiring a public hearing for this plan, because we do not have a public hearing required in front of the planning commission. But there is a public hearing required regardless of what we do here. There will be another public hearing required in Township Board.
I get that. I'm just saying at this committee.
Yeah, so what, I think what we're saying is...
That was my question, is like, does the, does, does it stop here? Or is it really just kind of starting here, then this fine gentleman will be back in front of the board and they're going to have all the questions that he's going to say, why didn't they do this, whatever that? And he goes, here's what I, you know.
You get to explain it to them.
You can explain it.
Good luck, buddy. No, but I...
We only have the ability to recommend.
No, I get that. So, and we're going to recommend something today, I sense, based on positive comments toward his, the plan. And then will we be back here for a public hearing or will that be in front of the board of trustees?
A public hearing for a major PUD amendment would be in front of Township Board.
Okay.
Already had one here, but then to get the thing finally approved, there's to be another one.
But then does, do things come back here for a, either a site plan approval or a PUD plan approval or what's the nomenclature that it's used in this case?
It would be a PUD plan approval.
PUD plan approval.
Now, I'm thinking about this. And sometimes the best point of valor is to hold off, because there's a lot of unique parts here about what the next step will be. And I'm not exactly certain I'm giving you the proper advice right now. It might be best to postpone this for two weeks. Allow me to figure out what the process should be. If you're okay with the uses, that's great. I think that's what we want.
Can we just approve the uses tonight?
Yeah, you could approve the uses today, yes.
Because he's got, he wants to know, he wants to let Colliers and whoever know that, you know.
That will give me some time.
Bring me a, bring me a Sheridan.
Could we, could we do something like, we approve the uses and defer to the process being defined by the planner as long as it comes back before the planning commission?
Yes. When it comes back to the planning commission?
No, it doesn't come back. It goes to the...
Well, after the...
This doesn't come back, but the plan approval comes.
Oh, the site plan, PUD approval comes back here.
Yeah, the, whatever, whatever approval is required comes back to the planning commission, so.
But we will have the ability to negotiate public benefits also at that time? That's okay, because I'm not opposed to a six-story building whatsoever, but there should be, you know, negotiations for the public benefit if it is, you know, more fire coverage or whatever, so.
Cats or environmental or sustainability or solar or?
Yeah, sustainable.
Yep.
So we cannot give him a commitment on number of floors today?
Uh-oh, pardon?
What kind of guidance can we give him on the number of floors arranged?
We can't.
I just moved, I, there is a move.
There's a motion on the floor.
Do that also, okay.
That, to approve, here's the motion, to approve the updated list of uses and that the medical office, rental office be a part of mixed use.
Yeah, and then, and that the...
It's, it's part of the...
Three to six.
You want to make it seven?
Three to six.
It says six.
So, okay, so that is a, okay, fine.
Yeah, we're approving the list, including that. And that's my motion.
Because that was what you brought up at the very beginning, that's why.
Yeah.
Reconfirmed.
And then...
And just because we say up to six, if the fire chief says, I can't handle that, then it won't get approved in the final plan, so it's got to be worked out with our fire department, that's all.
That's, that's an amendment, right?
No, I'm just clarifying that if we say...
It has to anyway. We can't, we wouldn't approve.
So I do have a question. It says three to six. Does that mean if he wants two, we say no? We need at least three story?
Up to, we should say up to six, because there may be a townhouse or something that's only two.
The question is, if he comes up with two?
So she just said up to six.
Up to six.
Up to, up to six, but then no many of that.
It can be one then. Can't be zero, so up to six.
But the density range is twenty to thirty, so.
So it's going to be higher.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, so if you have, then you can, yeah, so it's just a max height and the density range. Is that a friendly amendment?
Is what a friendly amendment?
Up to six.
Up to six stories.
Absolutely.
Support, did anybody support?
I did.
Okay, good.
Okay, so it was moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Human. Further discussion? Now, do we have in that amendment that is coming back to the planning commission?
Well, that's, we're going to be advised about that, so I don't want to put that in the motion.
Do we need?
He wanted to work out.
To be, the process to be determined and brought back to the planning commission.
Okay. Approval of process to be determined and brought back to the planning commission.
You can say for consideration.
For consideration.
Before you vote, I just have a, how, if, I, that's all fine, but in my head, I'm trying to think how this would work. But does, if, if this committee approved the uses, then we'd have to go to the board to get the uses approved, then come back down and get?
We can only recommend.
Then, right, then come back down with the process and a plan to planning commission. Then go back up to the board to get that.
It's always the case.
There's always, I mean, do we have to whip some, that's just, that's a necessary.
Yeah, the only time...
Create site plan, that'd be the case.
Yeah, the only time we don't see the final site plan is if it's a by right development. Then it, then it, the final site plan goes to the board.
So when can Josh get his updated uses before the BOT?
Oh, before the BOT.
How does that work, Josh? Do you know?
Yeah, no, Doug.
Mr. Reiser.
The minutes have to be approved and as soon as the minutes are approved, we can move on to township board.
Tonight's minutes, which we don't have, and we won't have till our next meeting.
Two weeks.
The ninth or the 23rd?
The ninth of May or the 23rd. So it'd have to be the 23rd.
What would, why?
Well, they could, they would assume that our minutes are going to be approved.
Our minutes from this meeting won't be approved to our next planning commission meeting, which is in two weeks.
Yeah, and projects have, knowing that we were going to approve the minutes anyway, they would go to BOT the next night. They have done that.
So our, okay, so our next planning commission will have the minutes from tonight's meeting. We'll approve our minutes. And when is the, the next BOT meeting?
The next day.
Five eight is us, five nine is them.
And who gets it on the agenda? It is...
Their agenda process, whoever does your agenda.
I would work with the supervisor and the manager.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
So we're trying to facilitate a little bit of pushing back. You can at least get your list of uses so you can start to market your project.
No, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what is going to require public hearing and what doesn't. That's my, that's my next concern.
We kind of need a little bit more feedback from our...
Yeah, you're, you're not sure if it needs a public hearing in front of the board?
Yeah, I got it determined.
Okay, that's what he's determining with the process. There may be one additional public hearing with the BOT.
That's either going to occur right away or at the site plan stage. Those are two possible.
And by that you mean when there's an actual product, a company, an idea, here's what it looks like, come talk about it public.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I think it should be. I don't think it should be a separate.
Well, we have to see what the requirements are.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. He needs to check the process. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Any further discussion?
So a motion to approve the updated list of uses and that the medical office rental be as part of a mixed use and up to six stories regarding residential and approval of the process to be approved by the planning commission. Did I get everything?
That last one.
It's not approved, we don't approve the process, like, we just get, the process gets...
He's going to let us know.
Let us know.
Okay, strike that last.
Report to you at the next meeting.
Oh, and Mr. Luon will report to the planning commission as to our next steps, our next, on our process.
But are you interested in?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I'll second that again.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Question I have is if the density is at twenty to thirty units per acre and at six stories, like an algebra high school, how many toilets are we going to need? REUs, you're on the, what does this do to our REUs?
When we get that.
What's that?
When we get that site plan.
Well, we know from what Stacy said is wood view commons was, how many units? Two hundred?
Three hundred.
It would be, we have, it would be equivalent of four wood view commons developments.
And there are 1,200 left, which means it's about 300 REU per...
That's the big development that was...
Mr. Baker on Jackson.
It comes down to, just because we have to calculate this all the time to make it sense, whatever standard you're using, certain counties use different factors. So some use how many toilets, sinks, garbage disposals, dishwashers and blah, 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 and they spit out a number that equates to one equivalent. Some use different and others. So if you had two bedrooms, three bedrooms, one bedrooms, they might get counted differently. If you have something on the first floor that's commercial in nature, like a restaurant, depends on how many restroom toilets are in there. So it all plays into a calculation, but I think what we heard from OHM was you had 1,200 left, which equivalent to four of the wood views, which would be 300 for, so, you know, that's all that you can go on right now and that's what I'm banking on. So until we do the actual design, you, you don't know.
But you're going to be well under 1,200.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, my gosh.
Or you could be rejected, because we don't have enough.
Yeah, if you don't have enough, it doesn't work.
Okay, call the question?
No, I'm trying to be respectful of the public. One of the members of the public has their hand up. I just want to let the chairperson know that and you can choose whether you want to recognize that person or not.
I have no problem.
Sure, sure. Okay, the consensus is sure.
Okay, so Mr. Patterson?
No, not if it's Rob.
It's got to be a short...
Thank you, Mr. Luon. I greatly appreciate that. I just want to caution you that if you do this tonight, you have just approved six-story buildings in SiO Township and you've set the precedent. The height of buildings in SiO Township has been a massive issue for years and if you do this tonight with this wording, you have set the precedent. So just caution, that's all I had to say. Thank you very much for letting me inject that.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
It is a concern, but we just don't know what the fire chief is going to say.
Right, and, and if we do want six-story buildings, the market will have to support it.
That's right.
You know, and two, this is where we want it. We want it where there's density. We want it where there's infrastructure. You know, we don't want it...
Well, we have a bigger road out the farm lane.
Exactly right. Or on Zee Road or something like that, where we got to put in a private sewer or piss off neighbors, you know, people driving by, they're going to have to look at it on I-94, but, you know.
Subject to approval, this is the right spot.
This, this is kind of where we want. I mean, Rob's got a great point, but to the extent that market will support density, we'll know that, to the extent that there really is demand for housing, it will know that, housing of this urban style, you know.
To the right spot.
And I'll be really clear, it isn't appropriate for everywhere in SiO Township and it, and we don't have the REUs to be able to make it appropriate everywhere on Jackson Road in the sewer district either. So, you know, this is a very unique...
It's still a PUD.
They're not getting financed with a six-story building unless they can fill it.
It is right around the corner from the fire department.
And how you suppress fire in a six-story building with stand pipes and fire suppression is something that they'll need to work out with the department who knows more about that than this body here.
But it's different than driving up and squirting water on the roof.
All right, any further discussion? I think someone did call a question quite a while ago. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Human.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see what you propose.
Me either. How, Doug, how do I, this process, how do we?
I think you and I can talk about that. I'll, I'll work with them.
All right.
All right, moving on to reports.
I just wanted to say, appreciate you working with us, Josh.
Thank you and I appreciate all the time we put into it. Hopefully we can, we'll try to find something that we'll all be proud of and look forward to.
Your website, Bob, it's coming.
Well, you will see it.
We will see it, yeah.
Wait, 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 see the dentist's office. I don't know, no, it's storage.
All right, here we go. Reports, we do have two reports that were written. Any questions on those?
Thanks, Bob, for yours.
Thanks, John, for yours.
Carlisle Wardman.
Mine's still shorter. Just one item, Chris was in...
Just one item, Chris was in a pre-application meeting that we had, I think since our last planning commission meeting, I think we had one pre-application meeting, and that was for the possibility, very conceptual, with the possibility of using some of the out, the Menards Outlots as multifamily residential, and they are specifically looking potentially at the two outlots that front Stabler, and the one little lot that was proposed a couple months ago for self-storage, so the two outlots that front Jackson are still, they weren't part of this concept proposal, but those are very conceptual, and, you know, you don't have a site plan yet, but that, that was, we had a pre-application meeting.
Sounds like commercial, general commercial. Is that right now, they're, they're zone general commercial?
They are currently all zoned commercial.
Commercial, so would residential be a permitted use in commercial?
Multifamily, because it's in the Jackson Overlay District, multifamily could be considered as part of a mixed-use project.
So in other words, would it be, would it be by right?
No, the unconditional use.
Okay, and was, was it condo, townhouse, any, anything, as long as you guys are throwing out concepts?
I want to say it was townhouse, wasn't it? I, I want to say it was like 72, 72 units, something like that?
It appeared to be, I don't think they had elevation drawings, I, I think, it appeared to be townhouses, yes.
So a little lower density.
Some, I, I want to say 72 units per.
I think so.
Somewhere in there, give or take, for parcel.
So that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I like where it's going.
Get that housing in there. All right, um, OHM.
I have nothing to report, but I did talk to Sally, and there's not a specific number of the remaining capacity in terms of water, it fluctuates too much, and it's really hard to put a number on it.
Thank you for checking.
No problem, but it should not be a concern, it hasn't been since I've been involved, and since Sally's been involved, it's really just a sewer, but that shouldn't really be an issue at this point yet either.
Okay, all right, um, let's see, all right, I haven't been to the DDA yet, but I do have the other ones, um, Chair Report, I did attend the Catalyst Communities Workshop, and this was, it was held by the state, Eagle ran it, and the Catalyst Communities are communities that are working on my healthy climate plan and putting together climate action, and so what we really did is we developed content using our climate action plans or other master plan goals for input into the state's grant request, and there are going to be two rounds of grants that are coming from the, I think it's coming from the Inflation Reduction Act, I believe, and in Michigan, the state is preparing a, a grant request, SEMCOG, because the Detroit area is eligible because of the size, and we are a part of SEMCOG, and then the Grand Rapids area, so we will have two opportunities to hopefully be able to receive some grant funds, either through the state or through SEMCOG, or, the first one is for planning, for climate action planning, and the second one, and that's distributed, so everybody gets a cut, and then the second one is based on that plan that is resulted from that funding, and that's a competitive grant, so we probably want to make sure we are keeping tabs on SEMCOG and participating with SEMCOG, so that's something we're going to do. Yeah, so we have two opportunities.
So we, you mean as a board, or a planning commission, the township, or like?
As a township.
Do, do we have a rep to that, a rep to it?
Oh, we have not designated a rep to SEMCOG yet, and we also don't have a, a rep for Watts. I think Steve was on one of the Watts committees, but that's also a transportation planning. Okay, next, we had a, an organizational meeting for the specification update and ordinance updates, and both OHM and Carlisle Wortman attended, we discussed the purpose, the approach, and the scope of the updates, now we have to follow through with a plan and a schedule. One of the ways that we can connect with SEMCOG is they are looking for input onto their 2050 transportation plan, and I've been trying, I haven't heard back from Watts, I'm trying to get Watts to be a part of that meeting, it's just going to be a Zoom meeting, and Commissioner Moore volunteered to coordinate a presentation by the Executive Director of WAVE, and so we need to kind of see which meeting and coordinate schedules with her. ZBA, we approved a, we have a setback variance, and it's rare for the ZBA to approve a variance, and this one just happened to be a, there was, it was an existing garage in the 20s, very odd lot, lots of, lots of unique conditions, so, um, the ESTF, reminder to share and encourage comments on the draft by May 1st, it's also been distributed to.
By May 1st?
Yeah, by May 1st, here in River Watershed Council, and the Water Resources Group, Resilient Washinaw with the county, and, because they're the major kind of collaborating partners on it, the next steps will be to incorporate our review comments, and then it will, will probably, we still need to determine process on that, Doug, whether it's a repub, a public hearing, or if it's just, how, what the relationship to the master plan is, but the trustees want to approve it, so we would recommend approval, and then go to the trustees, at least, then.
Do we have a public hearing if we need one?
It, I, I guess you can always schedule a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, we can do that, which I think makes sense, then also, two of the C's project team members who have worked with us, the task force for about a year and a half, are going to continue as the two interns working part-time over the summer, so they'll be able to continue the community engagement and plan that October event, and then the pre-app rotation, I'm on for May, Kim, you've got June, Jeff, I have you.
I got June.
You got June, and.
Didn't I do February?
Yeah, well, we have some people that can't do it, so, and then Jeff, we have you for July and August.
Okay.
That's your two months.
I can do June, I have to be home, strawberries start coming out.
All right, okay, that's my report.
Harvest.
Okay, let's see.
Just, no, that's good.
And I haven't attended a DDA meeting yet, and I don't think the housing group is met again, right?
No, that's in July.
Okay, right, um, road.
We don't meet until next month.
Okay, then that, those are the reports, so moving on, oh, sorry, oh, PPP, sorry, I forgot.
So there is a special meeting this Wednesday, we'll be visiting Township Parks, there'll be a meeting here at 4 o'clock by vehicle, so we'll just follow each other, it'll last from 4 to 6 o'clock, so, a little site visit.
A preserve tour.
Nice.
Yep.
All right, sorry about that.
Tomorrow night is your, let's see, I don't know, that's help.
OPC's presentation, yeah, okay, um, all right, now.
Yeah, that'll be a good one, come to that one, folks.
Yeah, I'll be Zooming.
Yeah, I'll be Zooming too.
Yeah, that'll be a good one.
All right, okay, on to minutes.
Three minutes.
If you're getting all right?
Yeah. All right, are there any corrections or clarifications? I had one clarification. All right, it is on page two, two, three, the third, um, paragraph in the bottom, Pittsfield Township did not join AATA, but instead entered a purchase of service agreement for FlexRide, which is paid to AATA out of the general fund, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't that AATA didn't, didn't contract with AATA, so, so it's just. Does that make sense? Yeah, so it's page two, third from the bottom.
FlexRide is part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A purchase of service agreement for FlexRide, which is paid to AATA out of the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else have any other?
Move to approve as amended, please.
Is there support?
Some move support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Reiser, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approved as amended, any other announcements?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Reiser, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 9:49.
So I will, I will report out tomorrow to the BOT, it'll be a short report, because there might be a long meeting of recording, so.
We voted to.
Be adjourned.